Are we going to-
Well, hey, I just passed twenty miles an hour and uh, I had to text into Ariad for the telephone during. I had to uh, kind of hide my fat thumb fingers here on my phone while I'm driving here. But I'm, I'm hearing pretty narrow, I should say.
Oh cool.
But it's a telephone number, and then it's an access number, and then it's your ID number, it's like, oh okay. So I gotta get it, I'm not really supposed to do all that off, you know.
Hello, Tabin. Is, is that our speaker here, or here?
Well, I believe uh-
That's a one, I'm wondering if we're-
Ariel? Does this microphone work, or is it that?
What I understood was, we're gonna, Mike, Mike Kelly, our presenter, our presenter today was gonna be in the chambers. I was in the chambers, Ariad's there.
Right.
Hello?
Hi, Ariel.
Hi.
Hello?
We're gonna, we're gonna be beginning now.
Okay, I just passed red bars, so this is gonna be uh, this is final, at least I'm hands free.
Oh, he's got a half an hour.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Eggers, we have- Oh, no, so which, which number's your number? One eight, okay, um, more, um, let me see, I'll allow you to talk, there you go.
Are we set?
Mr.-
Ariel?
Are you still on, can you hear me?
Commissioner Navarro?
Yes, I can still hear you.
Perfect, perfect.
Is there road noise, is there-
It's not bad. I can hear a little, uh, white noise.
Who's the, who's the, who's the, is that the chamber's at the moment?
Uh, there's Robert Rodriguez, and uh, Robert Gibson, and myself, and Eddie, and, uh, Robert Eggers is, has not checked in.
He's online.
I'm on the phone.
Oh, oh he is, oh, okay, okay, good, good. Good evening.
Sorry, I, I could get onto the Zoom meeting, but I'm on the phone.
Okay, okay, yeah, I experienced that in another Zoom meeting earlier today, that somebody was just on the phone, yeah, okay. Uh, shall we commence the meeting? It is six oh five. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez, Commissioner Rodriguez, would you lead us in the pledge, please? That's not exactly the way it is, uh, on YouTube, you know, when you've got groups that are all in acapella. Okay. Roll call, please, Ariel?
Uh, so, uh, Commissioner Navarro, Navarro?
All Commissioners present. Uh, are there any department announcements?
I have, I have no department announcement, I mean, uh, it's my first traffic jam in three months, so I apologize for that. Um, well, it was announced that we're gonna try to open up our office at RMA slowly, starting at the end of the month. So the last week of the month, that uh, as July first, that is Wednesday. Uh, we don't know quite what shape that is yet, and that uh, um, people on staggered days and still telecommuting, or everybody in, or, um, so that's still to be rolled out, but we hope to have, um, uh, protective gear for the public in place in the RMA building, so that we can schedule appointments, um, and do have individual service to those who call. And uh, it's the director's intent to o- open up in some manner by the end of the month. So that's all I have right now, and um, I'm still driving in, if my wind noise becomes too much, please just cut out my microphone.
Thank you. Uh, are there any other comments?
Yes, uh, if participating on Zoom, once you're selected, you will hear that you have been unmuted at this time. Please state your first name, last name, and county resident for the record. The San Benito County Planning Commission welcomes your comments. Each individual speaker will be limited to a presentation total of three minutes. Please keep your comments brief, to the point, and do not repeat prior testimony, so that as many people as possible can be heard. Your cooperation is appreciated.
Thank you, Ariel. Let's see. Are there any public comments out there, coming in?
No.
Okay. Uh, we go to the consent agenda. Uh, acknowledgement of, oh, public hearing, certificate of posting. Uh, acknowledgement of certificate of posting, and adoption of action minutes, uh, those are taken one, two, three. Do we have any comments on, um, the minutes?
No, no.
No? Can we have a, uh, motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'm, I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Did we get both, uh, Mr. Navarro, and, uh, Mr. Eggers?
I, I voted aye.
Eddie?
That's-
Same here, aye.
Okay, there you are, there you are, thank you. Uh, adoption of action minutes, uh, were there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. I move that, uh, we accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Uh, let's see, if we go on to our regular agenda of the public hearing?
Great, good, good. So, thank you, Madam Chair, and with that, I'd like to introduce the first item for public hearing, presented to, today by Michael Kelly. Um, this would be a use permit. Uh, Mr. Kelly, would you like to tip it off?
Yes, Michael Kelly, Associate Planner. I'm here to talk about this meditation retreat in Willow Springs subdivision in southeast county, under this- Is it? Well, uh, okay, first, uh, can you hear me, okay? By what means, or am I being heard by this, down here? By both of these?
Yeah, needs to carry on the PA.
Okay, all right, so, uh, just to be, uh, just to try it out, you, am I, am I, can I be heard well, right now?
Get your little muffled.
No surprise. Okay, all right, well, I'll, um, I'll do my best, then. Mi- Michael Kelly, Associate Planner, and I will be talking about the meditation retreat here in Willow Springs. And this meditation retreat is, uh, would be, um, monthly events of fifteen to twenty-five people at this site. It would be, uh, in addition to that, five years, every five years, there would be a three hundred fifty person event. There would be camping in tents, and there, the visitors would have available to them a bath facility that would be constructed in the near term, clo- uh, after, about a year after approval or so. In addition to that, in the longer term, there would be a meditation building that would be constructed in, uh, about twenty-five hundred square feet of that, and then two storage buildings. This would all be powered by solar panels. Uh, there would not be permanent cooking facilities on this site, but rather, there'd be temporary cooking facilities, uh, for events, or if not that, then catering brought in, and these events would be for members of this organization only. Here is the site, where it is, as I said, in southeast county, with Pinocchio Valley off to the southeast, about four or five miles off there, and then the analog fire control station there. This is thirty-six miles by road from Hollister. About midway, if you were to go from Hollister to Interstate five via Pinocchio Road, the turnoff would be midway along that route. And when you get to that turnoff, you would s- you would, uh, see the fire station there, and then you would go through the Willow Springs subdivision, and all the forty acre lots that are there, several forty acre lots, um, lightly developed, but enough that a road is available to reach the six miles into the project site, and I don't know, you can't really see that because it's blocked by this thing, but the project site is up here. And when you get to the project site, you will see here, uh, after it's all built, you will see the meditation building that is over here at the far end, over to the east, looking over the ravines and the valleys that eventually lead down to Pinocchio Valley. And then you would also see the bath facility here, and you'll see the storage buildings over here. And you would see these scenes, you would see the, uh, terrain like this, the hills, um, it's, you see steep slopes here, but the construction would happen on slopes that are not so steep. And these are people who are, um, attending, uh, less intensive use of the property right now, just day trips to the property. Uh, what's proposed now is, uh, more substantial, so it needs a use permit. And here they are on, um, this platform that's been constructed overlooking the Pinocchio Valley. Where they are gathering, uh, on picnic tables that have been placed on the ground. And this is the view, looking down toward Pinocchio Valley, uh, across the ravines that I mentioned before.
Uh, excuse me, uh, through the chair, um, I'm so sorry to interrupt, um, would you mind sharing your screen, uh, so that the attendees over Zoom and myself can see it? Do apologize for interrupting.
Thank you, I'm new to this, if you'll pardon me. Yes, yes, that should be it.
Yeah, if you could, uh, back up and just go through the slide quickly.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll do that, just, uh, take a moment to go back, and, uh, just to just to go back, so as I said, um, these are the features. Uh, these, let me tilt this down a bit, so I'm not right up, okay. These are the features of, uh, the activity that would be happening, the, the, um, size and frequency of the events, um, and, uh, and some details on, uh, on what would be going on there. The monthly events, the, uh, events every five years, the camping in tents, et cetera. And then, uh, here is the location, six miles off Pinocchio Road, uh, about five miles northwest of Pinocchio Valley, in the little Pinocchio, Pinocchio Road intersection. Here is the route across, across Willow Springs, with, uh, the, the road just leading across Willow Springs to, you can't see it because, because the screen's in the way, but, uh, the project site is at the northeast side of Willow Springs. And, uh, and here is the layout, as I mentioned before, the meditation building over here, the bath facility over here, and storage buildings over this way. And then, uh, the, the, the scenes of, uh, the photos submitted by the applicant that I mentioned before, where, uh, the people are, um, coming for their day trip, and overlooking Pinocchio Valley, uh, walking in among the features of the terrain here, and, um, picnicking, and again, looking o- over the terrain. So, um, back to the discussion of the general plan. The general plan is, in, is pretty much supportive of this kind of activity. It is a low-density, rather light land use on this property. The economic development element of the general plan encourages camping venues, which this, in effect, would be, would be economic development, it's not a commercial activity, but it does represent investment in the county, so it can be considered economic development. Uh, and it would, the general plan also has a number of policies relating to environment and safety, as shown here, and the, the, the use complies with those policies. This is the agricultural rangeland open space zone, which, uh, allows a number of uses that are kind of similar and reflect aspects of this use. Um, it doesn't exactly point to this, but the planning commission may, if it chooses, uh, consider this to be similar to those uses, a combination of those uses, and consider the use to be eligible for a use permit. And of course, we have the public health restrictions that are in effect right now, and the applicant has, uh, submitted a letter that's in your packet, acknowledging the restrictions that apply to every activity, including this activity, and intends to comply with that restriction and the mandate. This is exempt from CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act. It's, uh, the exemption class exempts more intensive activities than what is proposed right now, and more intensive activities like motel or restaurant. It also exempts residential, uh, a single residence, which, uh, the amount of construction on this lot would be similar to the size of a larger kind of a single residence. And then it's also supportive to the exemption to note that the roads are already present, and the construction would not take place on steep slopes, and it's not a very environmentally sensitive spot. So, staff would like to recommend that this use permit be approved, uh, through adopting this resolution, making the findings, and adopting the resolution, subject to the conditions of approval. But, um, first, I'd like to point out that, uh, we would request a change in condition thirteen, which, uh, has multiple points related to fire code, and on this point, there is, uh, talk about the, um, water availability for firefighting, and Fire Marshal has taken, uh, a look at what firefighting capacity is already there, and decided that the text that you see below would be sufficient for that, considering what is already there. So, um, instead of the fifteen thousand gallons of water, the Fire Marshal believes that it will be appropriate to have the one five thousand gallon water tank, and the two and a half inch wharf fire hydrant available there. So, um, we'd recommend changing the above text with the below text. If you have questions, then I can help you with that.
Commissioners?
Not at this time.
Mr. Navarro? Mr. Eggers?
No, at this time for myself. No, no question for me, at this time, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, maybe it's appropriate to hear from, uh, Mr. Kelly, did, was, did your client care to address the party commission?
Yeah, I'm not tr- let's see.
Hi, I didn't know it was quite done.
This is where I'm not familiar with this format, so.
If you're using a phone, and would like to comment, press star nine to raise your hand, and the Zoom facilitator will unmute you when your turn arrives. Uh, if you are participating on Zoom, uh, select the p- participant tab, and click raise hand icon, and the Zoom facilitator will unmute you when your turn arrives. If you not see any participant.
Uh, hearing no, uh, comments. I would just like to confirm that the Fire Marshal, uh, is, uh, reducing it from fifteen thousand gallons to just the five, because of the intermittent use, and, uh, the light use, is that correct?
In the presence of, uh, of, of water already on the property?
Okay. And they have their own well there?
They, they share a water connection with multiple parcels, there.
Right, right, it did say that, mm-hmm.
So that is available.
Do we have a motion? Any discussion?
I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
What's that use permit number?
The use permit is Resolution twenty twenty-
Use permit number-
Do you have a number on it?
Eighty-nine dash fourteen, yes.
Excuse me?
Eighty-nine dash fourteen.
Oh, okay.
Eighty-nine fourteen.
Yeah. I make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty next, uh, to approve the use permit, and to revise condition number thirteen, as suggested by staff, to replace water tanks with fifteen thousand gallons of water, and fire hydrants shall be available, to replace that with one five thousand gallon water tank, and one two and a half inch wharf fire hydrant on accessible roadway shall be available.
Any second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion is passed.
Aye.
Oh, okay, I thought you said already. Right, very good. That use permit is then passed.
Okay, number two.
The next use permit is PLN eighteen zero zero two five, uh, to be presented by Associate Planner Michael Kelly.
Thank you. Let me, um, just get this set up right, if I'm doing it right, share screen. And, uh, there we are, there we are. Can we all see the, uh, title screen of the presentation? Commissioner Navarro?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Uh, okay, um, so this is- Okay. This is use permit for-
There's a horse.
Somebody clucking.
Excuse me, uh, through the chair, before you get really rolling, I'm, uh, I'm just a couple streets back. If you hear somebody knocking at the front door, could you let me in? I'll be there.
It's open.
Oh, it's open, good.
Okay.
All right.
All right, um-
Mr. Kelly?
Yes, yes, Michael Kelly, Associate Planner. And I am going to speak about this wireless facility, under a use permit, PLN eighteen zero zero two five, at Ten Flint Road, which is at the intersection of Flint Road and Highway one fifty-six in the San Juan Valley. And maybe I should lean closer, if, pardon me. Uh, oops. There we are. This is a, a new tower, uh, a new wireless facility tower, ninety-five feet in height, with antennas at the top level that would be serving a purpose of communication for truck transportation. There would also be microwave dishes on there, and then in the future, not proposed right this moment, but in the future, there would be space for uh, wireless car- carriers, three potential co-located antenna groupings on this, and then at the base, a twenty-four hundred square foot lease area. The, the property here, as you see, is midway between San Juan Batista and Hollister, at Ten Flint Road there, along one fifty-six. And here is the tower, with the, uh, the initial antennas, omnidirectional antennas there at the top, that would initially be there for truck transportation communication. The three possible future co-located antenna groupings, and then the microwave dishes down at this level that would be there at the start, plus the ground equipment behind the fence here on the lease area. And this would be on this, uh, property, an agricultural property, with orchards here, and a residence, and agricultural packing buildings here, and the tower site. And looking more closely, here is the orchard, here is the residence, the ag buildings, and the tower. As I said, this is for, going to be initially for truck transportation communication. Um, Fleet Net here is the company that is, uh, running this service, that advertises its service as being for reliability of truck transportation using GIS tools, also providing fleet maintenance and repair and towing. And this map here is from their marketing materials, indicating that their covered areas along interregional roadways all across, uh, all across, um, US and Canada, uh, along interregional roadways, of which one fifty-six is one. So it would serve truck traffic on one fifty, one fifty-six, like it serves these other areas. Here is a view from one fifty-six, looking northward, this is part of, uh, a photo simulation, a visual simulation submitted by the applicant. This is before, and when the tower is installed, it would look like this. And from a different vantage point, this is looking northwestward from one fifty-six, toward the residence at the left, and the ag buildings to the right. And this is before, and this is the tower, as it would appear after, looking, uh, northwestward, this would be beyond, uh, the tower would be just right beyond that northerly agricultural building. Now, when we receive applications for new towers, we expect the applicant typically to make a case for why a new tower is needed. And you see here, the arrows mark the nearest towers in the area. You'll see the one over off Buena Vista Road that is right here. That is just beyond a gap between the areas of hills where the San Benito River passes, and it's possible that the terrain here would limit the reach of the, of this tower and the antennas on it. And then over here in San Juan Batista, the, the antenna is on a hill, so it might not be quite as much limited by terrain, but it would be more distant, and so the applicant proposes to have a tower located here to, uh, fill a possible gap, and improve reliability in that part of the valley, and for users of Highway one fifty-six. The general plan is, uh, it, it, as it says here, in the economic development element, wireless facilities are a priority for economic development, and then we also have the public facilities and services element that, uh, expects orderly expansion of these, and has policies like these marked here. Uh, the first noting that, uh, this has potential to extend technology to the public through telecommunications. The second requires co-location, which this tower provides. And then the third here, talks about the possibility of, uh, broadband service being extended to rural areas, which this would potentially, through the co-location, improve the, the reliability of service in that area possibly. The land use element calls this area the agriculture district, of course, and that, uh, in its definition, it looks for support uses for agriculture, supportive toward agriculture, which, um, these antennas, the initial antennas would be, by serving truck transportation, which of course serves agriculture among lots of other needs. And then in addition to that, co-located antennas would, uh, also help with communication in the area, which serves agriculture in addition to other users and other members of the public. This is, of course, agricultural productive zone, which requires a use permit for this kind of use. And then, um, the main set of regulations we have for wireless facilities is in chapter seven point eleven, which has a number of points on regulating new facilities, including the two that are shown here. One is for visual impacts, what will happen if a tower is placed there, to what will happen to the aesthetic qualities. And, um, in this case, um, we see the tower has a rather functional design, that is placed above, uh, rather- that is placed above rather functional looking buildings. And this is a kind of a setting where it's working agricultural landscape on flatland, where a lot of other designs that might otherwise be used in other settings might not work so very well in this setting. So staff believes that the design that is presented here is suitable for this particular setting with this particular architecture around it, especially with the finish that will be expected of this that will be non-reflective and will be a color that doesn't stand out too much. There is also the standard in there of a tower being at least five hundred feet away from residential areas. This is an agricultural area where the residences are at least five hundred feet. All of them are at least five hundred feet away, except for the on-site residence, which is closer than five hundred feet. And typically, if that's been in a permit, we have recommended that a condition of approval be added for a deed restriction for the property owner to acknowledge the issues of having the residence and the tower be closer than five hundred feet. Now, that, that condition of approval is not in the resolution, and I'll get to that. I'll request that that will be added. But before that, I'll say that this is exempt from CQ as utility extensions are written into the exemption class as being exempt. And it also helps the exemption to say that the highway is not marked as a designated scenic highway at the state or local level. The, the property is already built. The tower is two and a half miles away from the nearest tower, that is the nearest similar tower, rather than being a few parcels away. And case law also supports the use of this exemption for this purpose. So staff recommends that you approve the use permit by making the findings in the resolution and adopting the resolution. We, as I said, would request that this deed restriction condition that's shown here be added. I mentioned it in the staff report and I mentioned it in some of the, somewhere in the findings in the resolution, but I did not include it as a condition of approval and I should have. So here it is, right here. Just says what I said before, that the applicant would record a deed restriction stating that the property owner is aware of potential issues regarding the placement of wireless communication facility within five hundred feet of the single-family dwelling. And if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, I got a question. I thought down the, we had a lot of towers here in the past. They were going to be restricted to eighty feet. Is there a reason why this was ninety-five?
That, that's just simply the proposal as it has come.
Because there was a, we went around and around with a lot of those other towers, and they were going to make it more static, either a pedigot-judge-in type of tower or, or a tree. This, this doesn't come near to what it's, this looks more like a commercial. I thought that was on, on the planning from the past. Because I know everybody that put in towers in the past was restricted to make aesthetically like a pine tree or like a cooling tower type of. And was going to be limited to eighty feet. Now, another question. How far is that tower from the adjacent property?
Adjacent property? I'll need to look at the, the plan.
I thought you were about a hundred and ninety-nine feet to the west of Flint Road. Is that right?
I believe that's the case. One hundred and twenty-two feet.
Hundred and twenty-two feet.
From the edge of Flint Road.
Because we had another issue with crop dusters. I don't know if they still use them, but people didn't want them too close to the property because of crop dusters. Okay, so. But we're changing the rules, I mean, on the aesthetics of the towers.
Through, through the chair, may I?
Yes.
I'm glad to be here, by the way. Thank you for your patience. We were not aware of the intense dialogue evidently that you had in the past regarding eighty feet versus ninety-five. The use permit does allow the request for ninety-five feet. And actually, from the beginning, it was kind of ironic. We said, well, how would we stealth hide this thing? Because from, from the drive-in, it's a flat plain. In fact, you see the, the mountains in the background and everything. So it would either be that new tree, that new water tower, that new, we, we pretended even an asparagus, right? Because it's agriculture. But one thing that the ninety-five feet does do is it does allow the additional opportunities for co-location. And when we have a single facility, and this one, I, I do believe it's going to look industrial. It's going to look industrial on the landscape, that's true. But when you have the utility of taking the other carriers right there, you really reduce the pressure on having additional towers elsewhere to fill in. So that's kind of part of probably all those dialogues and discussions you had previously.
So this is going to say presence in the future. Someone wants to come in and put a tower, they can put a commercial-looking tower, and we can't demand that they put a tree or a tower.
If, if we were tucked next to a hill or a place that had a tree or maybe even another water tower or something in a, in a reasonable vista, it, it's still within your prerogative as a planning commission to, to, to go there if you wish for them to try another design that is in your prerogative if you feel that an exploration like that is, would be needed.
No, my opinion, I, I don't mind a commercial look. It's just that, I thought we had said presence in prior years on what tower's going to look like. That, that, I mean, for mine, I, industrial-looking look, it's fine. Ninety-five feet, it'd be better reception. And then I, I, we talked about removing that ordinance of five hundred feet. Just eliminated, you know, for residents. You know, you can't be having a resident with a five hundred feet, eliminate that clause. But I guess it never got eliminated.
I mean, it would, through the chair. It would still be in your prerogative if you wanted to see a mock-up of some alternative before you make a decision. But that, I, what I don't know is how much that has them think of, you know, if you've got something that's different construction with lattice work that, you know, it either adds or removes co-location opportunities. But we just, we just found with the placement that it was just going to be so bold, no matter what you did, that we, we couldn't really entertain what, what imitation thing would go on the landscape. But you, you believe, the water towers, there's that really great water tower one that's off of.
On Fallon, in McCloskey, in Fairview. Yeah. No, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. You know, I just, I thought we were going to stay consistent. And probably the planners weren't reading the past what was kind of, what other commissioners wanted.
If I, may I address the commission?
Please.
From the point of view of precedent in land use, every project and every property is unique and has to be viewed from its, the context. And here, if you look at the photo simulations, there are above-ground utility poles and in, in the vicinity that it's more similar to, to the look of the utility poles that exist there than having a, you know, an artificial redwood tree of a similar height. So there is not a precedent, a precedent, because every site is unique and has to be judged on its merits. So whether or not that's appropriate in this location is, is a specific judgment within your discretion to make.
Yeah, should it, should it have been right next to historic property, next to a mission, on the approach to something?
If you go down Fallon Road, you have the same aesthetics, you know, power poles. You go down Fairview Road, you see the same aesthetic, so that's fine. I mean, I, I don't, it's just that, I, I, I don't like the idea that we're changing everything. Next that comes on, they're going to make them put a, a tree or, or a, a tower. I mean, that's fine. I like the look, the modern look.
Well, I think that council.
There are some, I'm familiar with some wireless sites that are along the San Benito River east of, or west, I'm sorry, of, of Hollister, south and west of Hollister. And, you know, that's a rural setting surrounded by large parcels with residential uses and, and are visible from the city. So that's a distinction that wouldn't apply in this location.
Any more questions?
Thank you. Any other input from the commissioners? No? That's what struck me. Thank you. That was Commissioner Eggers?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. The council has indicated that every different project is individual. And as far as the aesthetics and the planning and the architecture, needs to be taken on that specific item alone. And it's good that we look back at what has been thought about in different specified areas. And when I looked at this, I wasn't, we've got these leaning telephone poles and the tower doesn't look aesthetically different. So it's in keeping with the landscape as I can see.
There, there certainly will be locations as, you know, as you approach from, you know, quarter mile, half mile away, where it will be distinct and you will even, you know, see that it pierces the ridge line. Say you're heading from San Juan Batista to Hollister and you're half mile away, you're going to see the structure and it's going to break the, you know, the silhouette of the mountain range, which hasn't been done. Well, it is if you stop and you see the, the telephone poles. Okay. But, you know, we kind of don't see those that often because they're that close. But when you have this offset, you will see that. But to the council's point, they would also see a, a brand-new ninety-five-foot-tall redwood tree in the middle of farmland. They would see. But maybe that's where you also discussed the height at, at eighty. Staff did speak with the, or part of our review was with the FAA and concerned about crop dusters and sometimes li, top lighting. What's interesting is if you need a top light, you're actually, you're not protecting the crop duster because they generally don't operate at night. But if you're on approach to an airport or something like that, it's, it's good to know where the tall things are. So night lighting for aircraft was.
The beacon red light, yes.
Was, was not deemed necessary here.
Does this, this tower have a light, Mr. Kelly?
No.
It's not required, is it? At ninety-five feet?
No airport, no airplanes nearby.
No, Fraser Lake and Hollister Airport are, are too distant.
Yes.
Very good. Okay.
So, so thank you, Madam Chair, for explaining that even if, if you like this tower and this design right here, it doesn't preclude us from asking for a stealth design in another context where it really might be needed, where we want it to disappear better.
Correct.
So from, from now, I want to get, make sure it's clear. Anybody can come with a design, it's going to be up to planning commission to accept or change it, correct?
It, it always has been.
Not going to be set, you have to have this design.
Or if there's, if we have feedback from the public that says that, that they're objecting to this as an ISO and they want it changed, then of course you look at it differently again. Shall we, are there any further comments? Is the owner, the applicant available?
He's not a stranger to these parts, the property owner.
Do we have a motion?
The public comment?
Public comment.
Public comment.
If you're using phone, please press star nine now. Or if you're using Zoom, please click the participant tab and click raise hand icon. We have, we have one raised hand or two raised hands. I am unmuting a number ending in one, two, three. Please state your first and last name.
And that's an echo.
I think, I think we will turn, turn that off. Sorry. Is that better?
Get an echo, one echo.
If you speak slowly and maybe a little lower. Give it a shot, Mr. Merrill.
I think that cut off.
Hello, are, are you still available, sir?
The number ended.
Selfless.
The, the caller is now gone.
Was there a second person?
The second person raised hand has lost the meeting as well.
I, I've got a feeling from that echo, they were both him.
Are we giving up? There's no sign, no sign of the applicant or comment?
Might give him a few seconds to try to dial back in.
Right, we'll give him a second to dial in.
You know how with Zoom, you can change your background? We should also have little sound effects like the music in Jeopardy when you're waiting.
Yeah, like you were coming in your horse.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
What is that caused by?
Hello again.
Yes.
Perfect.
Awesome. We hear you. State your name, sir, and.
Oh, no.
Please state your first and last name.
John Merritt for Horizon Tower.
Great. You are, you are live on the planning commission. Let's, thank you very much for your participation.
Your comment, sir? Mr. Teller?
Yes, good evening, Commissioner. Sorry about that mix-up for, it looks like we were on, you know, both phone and live. Just wanted to comment on the five hundred-foot setback, please, that we did, I think, reel that off. But it turned out it was, I think the site is actually four hundred and ninety-some feet from the proposed location. So that, and we forced the owner to move it another little fifty feet or so away. And his preference was that we leave it where it is. And he agreed to waiving the five hundred-foot setback. I just wanted the commission to know that we were that close. And other than that, we'd be glad to address any questions. We appreciate your consideration. We are in negotiations with additional carriers such as Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, D-Mobile. And no commitments yet at this point. But we expect that as the structure is built, other carriers will find it very positive to fill in that gap along the roadway there. And other than that, we'd be glad to address any questions, commission may have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
No, nothing that we're answered.
No, I, I think that it's going to be a good addition to the San Juan Valley. And we thank you for your investments, especially if this will help the truckers stop driving through Main Street, San Juan.
I can guarantee that, but it, it certainly does help them route because they're, they're just, they'll enable the dispatchers to keep track of exactly where they are in real time.
That's good, because I have jumped on more than one truck cab directing them out of that town.
That's a visual, I'd like to.
Are there any other questions from the commission, comments from Mr. Kelly?
My understanding is that the distance between the tower site and the property edge to the south is, I believe it, it said it's four hundred ninety-nine.
Yes.
Four hundred ninety-nine feet to the property edge, which includes the location of the residence. That was my understanding, I, I don't, I can, I can go further and find that out, that was my understanding. So the basis for asking for that deed restriction.
So we're not looking at something significant, that it's, it's a decent proposition?
I think so.
The, 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 the premise is, you know, the neighbor is generally no, no closer than five hundred feet. If you're the property owner that's been negotiating a lease for a tower on your property, you, you know darn well where it is and, and you're being accepting of it. And so that's how we've written that, is just kind of property owner, you, you knew what you were doing when you signed up for this lease. That's the, that's how I would paraphrase that condition. But I don't believe there's any more from the public, if you wanted to close that and then bring it back to the commission.
All right, then we'll pull it back to the commission. And do we have a motion on the floor? Motion to approve? Or you don't have it?
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash next, a use permit eight zero zero two five to approve a cell tower at ten Flint Road with the additional condition that there be a deed restriction on the property.
Thank you, Commissioner. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. The motion, the, the resolution is passed, zero five. Thank you very much.
Commissioners' comments?
Do we have some commissioner comments to end our evening here?
No commissioner comments, good.
Nothing from Mr. Gibson? Mister?
I'll make a, I'll be leaving the commission, I don't know, this year, probably prior before the end of the year.
You will?
Yes, I'll be relocating to another part of the county.
You're, you're moving to.
Rodriguez Court.
Oromas, right?
No, 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 I don't, I want to live longer.
So basically, your residence is changing districts from who you represent.
Do you, does he have to, or does a commissioner have to resign their seat upon moving? Or can they finish out their year?
We'll, we'll defer, give, give me a day to look back at the, at the, at the bylaws, but I do know that even if you haven't been reap- if we haven't had a new appointment, that you're allowed to roll over into the next position. So you represent Mr. De La Cruz?
Correct.
Who's also changing office, is that correct, in, in November?
Uh, yeah, December, yeah.
In January.
January.
When do you expect to move, sir?
Probably around August.
August, September, so it'll be a couple, couple hearings.
So if you can look at it, I'll, I'll be more than gladly finished here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look to see if there's a interim appointee. I don't, to me, I'm not seeing the utility of an interim appointee before we're going to have a new supervisor at the seat with the recommended replacement. To me, it just seems to be utilitarian to keep you on in that position. So we'll, I'll, I'll take a peek at the bylaws for you.
Okay.
Commissioner Rodriguez. Be, be, before we adjourn and everybody leaves, it would be great to catch you, Madam Chair, so that we can get the signatures on the resolution and not, not do all that computer, computer faxing type of things.
Faxing PDF and whatever else we did. Perfect.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much, aye. This meeting is adjourned. So be it, and thank you very much, commissioners, for your time.
We'd like to put on a, a future.